I asked you to be with the Ed Munson family as they mourn the loss of their son, of her, of Ed's husband and son and brother. And I asked that you be with Commissioner Lissy's daughter, Brandy, as she starts her new life as a married lady. We ask in your name, amen.
Okay, thank you. Item number five, do we have any citizens signed up to speak this morning, Miss Sweeney?
They did not.
Oh. Item number six, discuss approved, disapproved, signed plan for County Route 160. Signed plan is the result of a detailed engineering study which provides improvements and addresses safety concern as a result of a near miss. Speed limit will be set at thirty miles an hour. See attached document, Shelby.
On County Road 160, I had a constituent, Judy Berry, and lives on that road. And they almost had a near miss, they had a near miss, almost ran into an eighteen wheeler. And she approached me to look at the sign, the signage the way it is because it runs into County Road 159 and 160 come to that Y. I contacted Road and Bridge, asked Mr. Geisler to do a study, a sign study on that road. And he did that pretty much like next day. And they were out there changing the signs around where it would be a lot safer for people to travel. I asked that if we approve this sign, this road, I asked the Sheriff's Department to monitor that road for a while because the eighteen wheeler's are running way too fast that go up and down that road. And if you look on the back, mine's on the back, but there is an attached sign plan that goes with it, with this thing, with this request. And I asked that we approve it.
What was the unauthorized sign that was up? Okay.
Commissioner, can I ask a question? I've come up with thirty mile an hour speed on that particular.
Isn't it, has to do, I think, and Wayne will know this answer for sure, but it has to do whether or not the road is striped, I believe. Right. Twenty or thirty? If it's not posted, if it's not posted, it's thirty, correct?
Like four.
Any other discussion?
No, Judge, I'm if there are no further discussion, I would rather allow me that we approve this County Road 160 detailed engineering study to improve it, to approve it as presented.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Anybody opposed? Commissioner Lissy, turn your mic on, push it up to so folks can hear you. Item number seven, discuss approved, disapproved. Selection of DRG Architects LLC, San Antonio, Texas, provide design and construction administration services for a new Karnes County Precinct Two service center and Justice of the Peace Building to be located in Falls City, Texas, based on demonstrated competence and experience pursuant to Government Code Chapter 2254. Commissioner Lissy.
This is the architect that approved, that designed the archive building. They've done work for the county before. They've been recommended and this is, after we can get them hired, then we'll come back and negotiate the cost of the buildings and for approval by the court.
Who recommended them? I mean, I've worked, I've been working with Perry on the archive building and it went smooth, but who recommended it to you?
It was recommended by, Perry said that you hired him, right? And they came, they're doing work in Atticosa County and in Lavelle County.
Ms. Tapia, we can do that, correct?
Yes, I checked out.
Yeah, she approved this agenda item. I make the motion to approve item number seven as presented.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Anybody opposed? This will be a good thing. I'm excited about making some improvements to the county. Been talking about for the last four years, so I'm glad to see some traction. Item number eight, discuss approved, disapproved. Budget amendment to transfer $224,090 from Roden Bridge Fund 200 to GL 200-680-4606. Equipment acquisitions for the purchase of two paving oil tanks. The budget amendment is necessary due to unforeseen supply chain issues that delayed delivery of the tanks until fiscal year 2023, 2024. Wayne?
This is a item that was previously approved last year. And like I said, in the item, they were not, the supply chain prohibited them from getting the big tank itself primarily. And so they, they, it's in progress now. But I need to go ahead and move the money since it was in last fiscal year. I need to go ahead and reclaim that money, I guess, to go ahead. I guess is a good way of describing it so we can go ahead and get the tank spot installed.
So you're just moving the money from?
But the money's going to come out of the, because at the end of the last fiscal year, the money went back into the Roden Bridge Fund. And so it's going to have to be coming out of the fund balance due to unforeseen, the unforeseen issue with delivery.
Tom here?
Mm-hmm. He's back there.
Tom, everything good on this, right on the movement of it and all that?
Yes, sir, because that money went back into his balance.
Yes, I remember that.
So it wasn't spent because he wasn't able to do it.
And we spoke about using it.
Will that affect his budget this year? And increase it?
Yeah, we would add it to his budget this year.
Okay. I'll make sure.
I make the motion to approve item number eight as presented.
I'll second it.
Okay, you have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, no.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Tom.
Item number nine, discuss approved, disapproved. Engineer recommendation to award a contract for the purchase of bulk fuel to Cruse Incorporated, doing business as John's Oil Company. Today, one-year IDIQ contract with an option to extend the contract through the end of fiscal year 25, 26. Wayne and Tom.
All right, Court, this is our renewal. We were up for renewal. The last time we bid this out was twenty, the FY 2021. And we got two bidders, two responsive bidders on this. Like I said, there was, it was John's Oil as well as Dynasty. And we basically awarded based on a cost matrix that ranked them. And John's Oil came out on top with that. The, the cost of fuel has gone up about, just low bidder's cost of fuel has gone up about 12.8% from FY 20. So that's, that's a good number to hang your hat on. It's a lot of the reason we're seeing increases in our construction costs, so.
How close was it?
More than likely, we won't have to rebid. I mean, we will rebid extra. We're hoping fuel prices will go down.
Well, this is, and these prices are based on, it's based on markup above the marker price. So whatever the price of the day is, John's Oil basically is charging us, I believe it was forty-five cents above the marker. So make double sure about that, but I believe that's correct. Come on, machine, get over there. Yes, it should be forty-five cents above the mark.
Forty-five cents above market price?
Above the marker of that day, when it's, when it's delivered. That includes twenty percent state tax and then their delivery fee.
And you scored these bid?
I'm sorry?
Who scored them?
I did. I went through my standard matrix that I use on these, been using on these things for about five years.
The reason I ask, I just see that, I was looking at one and if you look at the, on your rating criteria, I just don't understand why one company got a five and is a local and the other one got a, got a?
Four.
Four.
Correct, and that's for?
And they're local.
Local proximity. The Dynasty got a five.
Yeah.
And, and, and that's correct because they're in the county. And Cruse is located outside of the county, one county away. So we try to take into account, we try to do business with local folks when we can, but if we've got to balance out the cost issues there, too.
I'll make the motion to approve item number nine as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, you've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Anybody opposed? Item number ten, discuss approved, disapproved. Establish language for longevity pay. The proposed language from the Salary Committee is included. Appreciate Wayne and Tom and Vi and Commissioner Geisler, Ms. Sweeney, Bonnie, Tom. Sure. Chief, chief. So this is what's been agreed upon by the Salary Committee and placed in front of you for court approval. I'll read it for the record. Longevity pay budget and court approval dependent. Karnes County will annually award longevity pay to Karnes County employees for each year of their loyal service to Karnes County. Service time must be consecutive employment within Karnes County. There must not be a lapse in service. It must be continuous service to Karnes County specifically. $240 a year of service to Karnes County will be extended to full-time employees. Part-time employees will receive $120 per year of service to Karnes County. An employee must be employed for one full year with Karnes County before receiving longevity pay. A lump sum will be paid to eligible employees in a standalone payment on December 1st. There is no set cap for years of service paid. The years of service will be based upon completion years as of 9/30, that's our fiscal calendar year. If an employee was part-time and transitioned to full-time, they will be paid accordingly to their respective rate for part-time and full-time. This is subject to change based on the annual budget.
I'll move, we approve item number 10 as stated.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Anybody opposed? Item number 10, discuss approved, disapproved. Establish language for, I'm sorry. Item number 11, establish, this is to discuss approved, disapproved, to establish cost of living adjustment at the COLA. Language slash details, proposed language from Salary Committee is included. I'll read this for the record so y'all know that it's presented to the court. Cost of living adjustment effective October 1, 2023. All Karnes County employees will receive a 3% cost of living adjustment with the exception of the following positions. Sheriff Patrol deputies, Sheriff Patrol sergeants, constables, sheriff sergeant investigators, sheriff investigators, sheriff bailiffs, and the Karnes County Library Director. An employee must be employed by or before 8/31/2023. For employees transitioning from part-time to full-time working status, the committee recommends that their hourly compensation be increased by 3%.
Judge, may I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Well, I mean, I think I might know the answer, but just for clarification, the, why are the sheriff patrol deputies, the sheriff patrol sergeants, constables, sheriff sergeant investigators, sheriff investigators, sheriff bailiffs, and the library director exempt from this?
On the sheriff's, on the, all the sheriff's department, it's, they, you know, last year they got a significant raise. This year they got another significant raise. And that's the Salary Survey Committee's recommendation to the court.
And the library, same reason?
Library, same reason.
I make the motion to approve item number 11 as presented.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Anybody opposed? Item number 12, discuss approved, disapproved. Establish language slash details regarding Karnes County paying retirees insurance. The proposed language from the Salary Committee is included for your review. I will read it for the record. Okay, medical insurance to be paid for retirees effective October 1, 2023. Budget and court approval dependent. Karnes County will pay 100% of a retiree's health insurance premium for a maximum of five years or until the age of 65, whichever comes first. If they meet the following criteria, they must retire from Karnes County through TCDRS. They must have been employed with Karnes County for eight consecutive years. Recurrent slash past retirees, as long as the retiree has maintained healthcare coverage through Karnes County without a lapse in coverage, the county will cover their health insurance premium if they meet the aforementioned eligibility requirements. The committee recommends a grandfathering clause should budget constraints arise as well as a report to be reviewed by the court to review the cost of this benefit. This is something that was presented. We talked about, we had luckily a couple of folks here at our last Commissioners' Court meeting that brought up some, some, some pretty good ideas. Commissioner Geisler is one of them. Wayne was one of them. Wayne Teeman was here. He said, you know, he worked in oil and gas industry with DuPont and Conoco for years. And it's something that without the proper restrictions, that this is something that could really strangle the county. And so we decided to put the language in, budget dependent, that we can review every year. Because if the oil and gas faucet turns off, we're going to be having to let people go and significantly raining in our budget on several things. So I, I do like the, the verbiage that we've put in. And I think that it's a great benefit to retaining folks to work for the county. So. Any discussion from the court?
Judge, what is, I mean, I, I like this. I mean, I'm just trying to get an explanation. I need, what is grandfathering clause? What, what is that clause?
We mailed out to, how many by? Four? Four employees that have retired, that were already mailed out the opportunity to have this, to take part in this before we put the, put the restrictions, the restrictive language in. And we just want to make sure that those four employees have the opportunity to take advantage of this if they want to, retired employees.
And every year at budget time, we'll review this and so we'll know if we can afford it or not.
And know if we can afford it or not, correct?
Thank you.
And I'm assuming if, just saying this, I guess, for my peace of mind, if we can't, then we would, that's, adjust or terminate this. Correct. If we have to. Thank you.
Judge, I'm going to approve the, the language regarding paying the retirees for the insurance. Proposed language from Salary Committee, that's included in our packet.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Anybody opposed? Item number 13, consent agenda. We have our minutes from July 11, July 25th, August 8th, and August 9th, 11th, and 22th of 2023 for our budget meetings. We also have reports from our Constable Precinct 3, our Justice of the Peace Precinct 1, Justice of the Peace Precinct 2, Justice of the Peace Precinct 3, Justice of the Peace Precinct 4. We have our Sheriff's Office, our Tax DMV, and our ID, IT Department. Reports all included in the consent agenda. Anybody need to pull one of those or two of those or any of those? We can do that. The next agenda item, otherwise we'll approve one motion.
May we approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Anybody opposed? No. Any to discuss? Somebody consented, consent agenda for item number 14? None. We will move to item number 15, updates from our Commissioners starting Precinct 1.
Past week, I, first I want to say that we had Hazard's household cleanup day. And I want to thank Roden Bridge for providing, two people that saw it showed up to help. So Wayne and I and two employees, we loaded tires and we loaded a trailer truck load full. So I think our tires are starting to slow down some a little bit, but there's still a lot, I found, found a lot of road, a lot of tires on the high, on county roads and highways, yeah. Drove around the county and was looking at county roads this past week. And I made a bunch of notes and I'll be forwarding to Wayne for repairs or comment. Met with the JP's the other day and we were talking about their reports and some other issues anyway. But we, we had a good meeting with them. And on the emergency management side, we had a fire at a compressor in Marathon County with 163. Five, rather. And then we also had a, I've been talking with the city candidate trying to get these guys when they park their trucks on the road and they stop to go work out at the, at the Anytime Fitness or whatever they're doing. They're leaving their trucks there. I talked with DPS and, and we're working on something, on something that. Yesterday had a pleasant phone call with Cook Patton. We were talking about the Gillette area, some of the things for EMS and other, other types of ideas that we may have. And he just wanted to make sure that we had something in the plans that were working and not just slip service. And when I told Cook to continue to call me or call anybody who wanted to, we would talk with him. The meeting with, with Brian Giehen has been postponed till November due to them being called back and intercession. And that's it. That's all I have, Judge.
Thank you, Commissioner Precinct 2.
Well, Commissioner Rosales and I have been working with the Sheriff's Department and the constables. And I believe they all got their cars, didn't they? Constables are fully outfitted now with, they go to work. And I got, Jimmy got him a computer set up in their office. Their office is set up and they've got their evidence lockers ordered, should be here soon. And had a lot of calls about the burn ban after it rains and it's still in effect. So burn ban is still on. And a lot of calls about trash on the roads. And County Road 213 and 212 will be paved soon. And that's all I got for right now.
Thank you. Commissioner Precinct 3?
Well, I've been checking on the auditor's building daily, seeing the progress of the contractors there. I met with Kelly and her husband on a cemetery out there on Luke Patton's land, about a pover there. What I'm going to get with the Roden Bridge engineer, I just met with him yesterday, I believe. And also have met with Roden Bridge engineer and his office about different issues in the county. Been meeting with the folks there and Helen about county road that we're redoing there, which I'm in contact with the engineer about that, too.
Thank you. Commissioner Precinct 4?
So I took a ride with the Constable Precinct 4 a couple of Fridays ago in the car. In the car, the cars, they look really, really good. I like the Sheriff's Department for sending the olive branch and making, helping make that, that stuff possible. It's awesome. That's, that's great. I know the constables are very happy with it and they're excited. I've also checked some roads and I know there's some, some repairs we got to do. And I'll be getting with Wayne on, on some of that. I also visited quite a few parking heads as well as the judge. I mean, knowing the, we have a, a policies procedure scene we're looking at and trying to kick around and try to shape it to a. at and trying to, to kick around and try to, to shape, uh, to a, uh, an instrument that will, will work for our county here, uh, so we'll be continually looking at that, uh, then I did work, uh, with Ms. Tapia, who diligently, finally, you know, worked, worked hard to get to that, that M O U out, and, uh, so we'll be going to the, uh, City Council of Life here, and we're gonna get to try to, to have that agreement, uh, finished up, and, uh, that's it.
Okay, all right, we're gonna just have our report from our Tax Assessor Collector today, uh, we will let Tom and Ida do there at the end of the month. Tammy?
Good morning, how are all of y'all today?
Outstanding.
For the month of September, for the county M and O, for the current collections, they were one-hundred-one-thousand-six-hundred-thirty-five dollars and ninety-two cents, the current year-to-date was seventeen-million-two-hundred-sixty-four-thousand-six-hundred-one dollars and ninety-six cents, for the end of the year, we had ninety-nine-point-four-nine percent collected, on the delinquent month-to-date, it was seven-thousand-nine-hundred-nine dollars and sixty-four cents, the delinquent year-to-date was a hundred-and-fifty-thousand-sixteen dollars and fifty-nine cents, with thirty-eight-point-oh-seven percent collected, oh, I forgot to tell y'all, in the year twenty-one last year, I'm sorry, twenty, yeah, twenty-one last year, the collection was ninety-nine-point-one-two, and this year it was ninety-nine-point-four-nine, so we're up just a little bit from what we collected on last year, so. On the county INS, the delinquents, month-to-date was two-hundred-ninety-five dollars and seventy-eight cents, the delinquent year-to-date was two-thousand-four-hundred-seventy-one dollars and three cents, with forty-two-point-two-eight percent collected. On the Roden Bridge, the current was twenty-thousand-eight-hundred-four dollars and one cent, the year-to-date was three-million-five-hundred-twenty-eight-thousand-forty-five dollars and twenty-two cents, with ninety-nine-point-five-zero percent collected, the delinquent month-to-date was one-thousand-two-hundred-ten dollars and forty-five cents, the delinquent year-to-date was twenty-nine-thousand-four-hundred-twenty-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents, with thirty-nine-point-nineteen percent collected, on the twenty-three statements, they are, have been proofed, I'm sorry, they have been, the proofs have been done, it took them like forty-eight hours to run everything for Karnes County, I want to say it was like a hundred-and-twenty-one parcels, I started proofing them yesterday, I've got to finish proofing them, so that they can be mailed out, hopefully they're gonna be mailed out tomorrow.
Is that the twelve-thousand-dollar bill from Richard and Abbott that's in the bill cycle this year?
No, it hasn't, no, that's just for the, uh, for you, us using their system, they're gonna send it, send out an additional bill for them mailing out stuff, after they're mailed out, so hopefully, once we get finished proofing them, because we gotta check all the exemption ceilings, all that good stuff, um, then they'll mail them out to everybody, so hopefully by the end of this week, they will be going out in the mail.
Good, thank you. Item number seventeen, discussion slash acknowledgement of personnel changes, this is all departments and any changes in those departments, have that report in front of you, I also believe that we have it on our website, for those that are looking to work, folks that are looking to work, you've just heard some incredible things that the county offers to, uh, to work here as benefits, so we do have a, one resignation, we are currently hiring an I T technician that will work, Jimmy, two part-time election clerks, a Tax Assessor Collector Office Deputy, uh, one full-time and one part-time, correct, Tammy? Roden Bridge has, uh, two maintenance tech-three positions, and obviously, we are looking for Sheriff Patrol deputies, so, if you're interested in working for the county, pick up, phone call, email, get you in touch with the right people. All right, item number eighteen, payment of bills.
All right, Court, I sent the bill list out on Friday, our total bills for today are nine-hundred-thirty-seven-thousand-nine-hundred-ten dollars and seventy-seven cents, of that amount, six-hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand-two-eighty-one-eighty-four is for Roden Bridge, and of the Roden Bridge expenses, five-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand-seven-forty-seven is the C T I F roads, and of the C T I F roads, one of them were released to retainage on County Road one-twenty-four, sixty-six thousand, the other two amounts are for County Road one-twenty-five.
Wayne, if you could, next, uh, at the next court, let's get an update on where we're at with that C T I F money.
I make the motion, uh, to approve payment of the bills as presented.
I'll second it.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second, pay the bills, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand, anybody opposed? Okay, item number nineteen, we're gonna acknowledge that the Commissioners' Court will meet on October twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three, nine o'clock in the morning, right here in our Karnes County Historic courtroom, located at one-oh-one North Santa Maria Avenue, Suite two-hundred, Karn City, Texas, item number twenty, motion to adjourn in thirty-five minutes.
I'll move we adjourn.